Good afternoon. It's 5:00 on December 12th, 2023. This is a meeting, a regularly scheduled meeting of the Bastrop City Council. We have everyone here except Councilmember Crouch, who we understand is on the way. The city reserves a right to reconvene recess and realign the regular session or call executive session or order of business anytime during the adjournment. I'm now calling this session to order, and we will be moving immediately to executive session at 5:01. Close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding proposed rock crushing plant in Bastrop County. City council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071, 551.072, to seek the advice of legal counsel and discuss a potential acquisition of real estate relating to Vista Pointe Drive right-of-way project. City council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding petitions to release areas from extraterritorial jurisdictions in Senate Bill 2038. 2D, the city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Codes 551.071, 551.072, to seek the advice of legal counsel and discuss professional engineering contract and matters related to wastewater treatment plant number three project. Item 2E, city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding proposal of a public improvement district in connection with the Bastrop Gateway Development. Item 2F, city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding the Lost Pines Art Center located at 1204 Chestnut in Bastrop, Texas. Item 2G, city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding potential amendment to the Colorado-Bin Development Agreement and Public Improvement Plan. Item 2H, the city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding potential agreement of Corex and SpaceX related to real property. And item 2I, city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding the development agreement for the project known as The Hill located Highway 95 and Arena Drive. Council is now in executive session. Good evening. It's 6:30. City council has returned from executive session. We have a couple of action items here that we're going to address. Waiting for the remainder of our dais to get here. Do you have your resolution? Do you have one? Do you have yours? On item 2I.
I make a motion to approve a development agreement for the project known as The Hill located at Highway 95 and Arena Drive.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lee. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second with Councilmember Plunkett. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will, read the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. On item 2A, Councilmember Crouch?
I move to approve Resolution R. 2023-182, expressing concern regarding the rock crushing plant.
I have a motion from Councilmember Crouch. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second with Councilmember Plunkett. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will, call the roll.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Crouch?
I move to authorize the city manager in consultation with the city attorney to execute a settlement agreement for the amount and terms discussed in executive session and authorized payment by the city of Bastrop of such settlement amount to settle the matter of City of Bastrop versus Urhart Legacy Partners, LTD, for the acquisition of right-of-way necessary for the Vista Pointe Drive project.
We have a motion made by Councilmember Crouch on item 2B. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second with Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland. Do we have any further discussion, council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will, call the roll.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. We will now move to the items in our regular meeting, which will be the Pledge of Allegiance. And our pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by Avery Foberg and Sheen Redfern of Bastrop Middle School. Did I pronounce that correctly? No? You want to help me out?
It's Cheyenne.
I said Sheen, didn't I?
Yeah. It's okay.
I'll make a correction. Cheyenne will be leading this pledge. Ladies, if y'all will step up, would everybody please rise?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one state under God, one indivisible.
Let's give these young ladies a round of applause. Ladies, if y'all will stay up here, Colin's gonna take a picture of you. Close nicely. Thank you very, very much. We'll now have one of our police chaplains, Grady Chandler, to lead us in a moment of prayer. Thank you. It's an honor to have you.
Father, we come before the throne of grace, and Lord, we know that it's grace that we're even here tonight. And God, what a privilege I stand here, Lord, and pray for unity in this place and all dealings within the city. I pray for the covering of the city. I pray for all the officials, Lord, that are actually putting themselves into service here. And Lord, I just want to thank you, Lord, for all that you're doing in our city. What a privilege it is just to be a part of it. And Lord, we thank you, God, in many things, in many aspects. And Lord, we know that all things work together for the good for those that love God and call according to his purpose, and we pray it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you very much. All will be seated. We really appreciate our chaplains. Council, we have quite a large agenda. There's been lots of activity since our last and only meeting in November, and this is our last and only meeting, regularly scheduled meeting for December. I'm not gonna go over the myriad of activities of which the city participated over this past year in the hopes of moving this agenda along, but I will give any council member the opportunity, should they have something specific that they would like to report out on. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Bastrop. I just wanted to thank everyone who participated in the community over the past weekend with the many different Christmas activities that we had. It was a great weekend, even the weekends leading up to it, the Christmas tree lighting before that, and the parade. The library had a great open house, as they always do each year. It didn't make the Homes Tour. There's only so many things you can do in so many hours on a weekend, but kudos to everyone that planned and organized and attended the Christmas events. They were awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We're gonna go ahead and move on. There's a special proclamation that we want to make. There was one of our... One of... Thank you. One of our community partners had an outstanding event, and the city wants to issue a proclamation for that. If I could have the president and CEO of the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce to come up to the dais, and you can bring as many people as you want to line up, because I'm just gonna read it and give it to y'all, because this is pretty momentous. Our Chamber of Commerce recently received or achieved accreditation with four-star distinction, and I want to read the proclamation from the city of Bastrop. Whereas the state of Texas granted Articles of Incorporation for the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce on January 14th, 1922, and whereas early members provided a vision for the town by adopting the motto "Bigger, Better Bastrop," and whereas the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce has consistently demonstrated unwavering dedication promoting the prosperity of our local businesses and enhancing the quality of life within our community, and whereas the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce has undertaken the rigorous process of accreditation showcasing a commitment to the highest standards of excellence in chamber planning and performance, and whereas the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce has achieved the prestigious four-star distinction as a testament to its exceptional leadership, effective programs, and steadfast support for the local business community, and whereas the accreditation of four-star distinction serves as a mark of excellence, recognizing the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce as an exemplary organization that surpasses industry benchmarks and contributes significantly to the economic vitality of our city, and now therefore I allow Nelson Mayor of the city of Bastrop to hereby proclaim our heartfelt congratulations and commendation to the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce for achieving accreditation with four-star distinction. We applaud the chamber's tireless efforts, innovation, and commitment to fostering a robust and thriving business environment. Your dedication sets a standard for others to follow and reinforces the city's reputation as a vibrant and prosperous community. Let's give them a hand. I will also say this, my announcement partner for our outstanding Christmas parade. There you go. You bet, buddy.
I just want to say thank you. There was a foundation laid before me going over decades, and literally the Board of Directors in 2014 went through a self-evaluation and knew that we weren't quite ready for accreditation in 2014, and we officially put it into our strategic plan in 2019. But we couldn't have accomplished this without a lot of great community partners as well. I need to say great thanks to Sylvia, because she provided some community profile information that we needed for our accreditation process. Councilman Plunkett, having served a year and a half on the Board of Directors, or as the chairman of the Board of Directors, and I don't even know how many years as a director on the Chamber Board, but without some of those key partnerships, this accreditation would not have happened. But I have to give a big shout-out to Jamie Haney, our VP for the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce, who was hired specifically in 2021 to get this bus across the line. So we thank Jamie as well, and just again, the visionary efforts of everyone involved and just the community partnerships that are here. So thank you, because this is a community award, not just a chamber's award.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we're gonna move right along to our work sessions. Item 8A is a presentation on zero waste.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. We're gonna be talking about the topic of zero waste, and this is an overview of how zero waste is going to affect our economy and what it looks like as far as creating jobs and building economic vitality. So I guess it's pretty fitting that I'm going after the chamber's accreditation announcement here. So we have a problem, Texas, here in our state. We have almost 200 landfills, and these are made up of type 1, 2, 3, and 4, and hazardous waste, residential business, medical waste, construction and demolition debris. So they're considered one of the top five gas emitters for climate change. And why is zero waste important? And I'll get to the definition of what that actually is here in a moment, but why zero waste is important is because for every pound of waste that we generate and we put out to the curb at our homes, apartments, businesses, there's about 71 pounds of waste that are generated upstream in order to make that one pound. And so it's not just the materials. We're talking transportation, production emissions. And unfortunately, food waste makes up about 30% to 40% of the entire U.S. waste stream. And it's really quite sad to understand that about 1 in 8 people in America don't have access to healthy foods, and a lot of them don't know where their next meal is going to come from. Many of those are children in our elderly population. Another thing is that landfill methane emissions are 21 to 72 times more potent than carbon dioxide. So when we ask the question, where is away, whenever you throw something away, where is that? What I always like to say is that on a circular planet with finite resources, away is in our oceans, it's in somebody else's backyards, it's affecting our wildlife, our air, water, and soil, and our overall quality of life. So this is me. My name is Stacy Savage, AKA The Texas Trash Talker. I'm the founder and CEO of Zero Waste Strategies. In my previous experience, I've been working with policy development and lobbying experience at the State House. I helped pass two statewide recycling bills for toxic e-waste, such as computers and TVs. Now, all manufacturers that provide computers and TVs in Texas are responsible for the free take-back and responsible recycling for consumers because of these two pieces of legislation. So I also helped develop and pass four City of Austin recycling ordinances, which would include the Single Use Bag Initiative at the checkout, as well as construction and demolition waste and debris recycling, curbside composting for residents, as well as the Universal Recycling Ordinance, which is a requirement for business recycling, as well as food waste diversion from the landfill for food permitted businesses. I'm also the former chair of the Austin Zero Waste Alliance, which was a watchdog group, and we helped city council vet policy before it was voted on. We helped develop several of the ordinances. I also served as a city council appointee on the Zero Waste Advisory Commission in Austin for two years. I was appointed by my council member in District 2. And then I'm currently a board member of the State of Texas Alliance for Recycling, which is an industry and trade group where we do legislative lobbying at the Capitol, and we push for recycling initiatives, policies, and economic development across the state. So our current client list includes some folks you might recognize here. We work with some very large corporations that produce millions of pounds of waste every year. We also work with small mom-and-pops because we can scale up or down our services. I've been working on landfill issues for many years, over 20 years. Back in 2003 is whenever I started my previous career as a door-to-door campaign community organizer with a statewide environmental nonprofit, and we were able to work with landfill operators, the state government, and local county commissioners' courts in order to strengthen legislation and requirements around landfills, what is accepted, and the buffer zones to protect communities. We worked on this in Travis County, in Williamson County. Y'all know about the Caldwell County dump that's being contested right now, or is a large pushback from the community, mainly because a lot of times landfills have had a historical record of mismanagement and affecting communities. Now, when we live in a community like Bastrop, we don't have a landfill really in our backyard. Our materials get carted down the road, and it goes to Travis County mainly. So whenever we throw things away, when we talk about away, again, somebody else's backyard. So we don't really have to deal with the smells and the vermin and the mismanagement that many landfills are known to cause. So in Austin, back in 005, we were able to successfully get the city of Austin to consider using the Long Range Solid Waste Task Force to develop them into more of a zero-waste task force, and that would plan out about 30 to 40 years of envisioning how we can minimize waste in the city. So let's get to it. What is zero waste? So there are just a key couple of terms that we all need to get on the same page about. So waste diversion is reduction and reuse of materials for new products and services instead of sending them to the landfill. Zero waste is a program to divert discards from landfills and incinerators by a minimum of 90%. You can go more, and governments and corporations are actually doing this already and meeting that goal. But this is how we do aggressive reduction through reuse, repair, recycling, repurposing, remanufacturing, refabrication, repair, composting, upcycling, downcycling, donations, and so much more. There's a lot of room for reuse and reduction and before you get to the option of recycling. So think about it as kind of a hierarchy of higher and better uses of our materials instead of burning or burying them. Organic materials, this is not the aisle in your grocery store where you get your organic produce. This is organic materials that come from or grow from something that grows, so tree leaves or eggshells, something that can compost, which is the next definition. It's a natural process that breaks down those organic materials into a dark soil-like material called compost, and it's great for soil amendments, putting nutrients back into the soil. So currently, we're in a linear economy. It's a make, take, dump economy, and it goes from point A to point Z. Now, what we want to do is take point A and Z and make them into a loop. We want a circular economy here so that many of these materials have far more lives than what we're commonly using them for. So putting them back into the system so that we can... And this is where your job creates... So we're seeing this, again, the definition here, 90% or more. If we can do it by 2040 or sooner, great. If not, you know, we're trying. So you can see some government ordinances that are already in place, even in Culibra, Puerto Rico. You can see that corporations are committed as well. Here in central Texas, we've got Dell. Out in Colorado, we've got Sierra Nevada, if you're a beer kinda person. School campuses are being led by an organization called A... And it's a higher education campus leadership program for waste minimization and sustainability. You'll see nonprofits, and even conferences are getting in on the action. Shows kind of the overall waste stream here in the U.S. You'll see at the bottom, 12.1% and 21.6% are your organic materials. So when I said 30 to 40% of the entire waste stream, this is what we're talking about. We're also looking at high rates of disposal for durable goods, which are defined as products that have more than three-year lifespan, like automobiles, and then you've got your non-durable goods of less than three-year lifespan. So this is the zero-waste hierarchy that I was discussing a little earlier, where you have your rethink and redesign, reduce and reuse at the top. In the middle, you'll see the diversion activities. Up top is kind of more of a refusal for waste. In the middle is more diversion of waste that's already been created, and then at the bottom, you'll see disposal. And disposal methods are those kind of burn and bury methods where we don't want to see those materials in the landfill or incinerator piles. So why is zero waste important? It goes a long way to talk about in economic terms as well, because we're burning and burying jobs, and I don't think that a lot of us understand the connection between what we do with whatever's in our hand, whatever bin it goes into, what happens downstream. So you've probably heard of the three Ps. That's people, planet, profit. That's kind of your triple bottom line, but I think that there's more to it. I think there's more, like, five Ps. So with people, planet, profit, why don't we throw in purpose? Give a community purpose around these materials. They should be treating them with respect and properly managing them responsibly, and also drafting policy so that everyone is playing on the same level. This goes for businesses. This goes for residents as well. If we really are committed to capturing materials that are highly valuable and not allowing them to go to burn or bury facilities, then policy is really what we need. So this builds out local material markets. Think about your cardboard that needs to be broken down into pulp. Where does that get processed to make new cardboard? So the material markets, instead of sending it overseas to China or India or, you know, south of the border to Mexico, we need to keep our materials local so that we can create those jobs. It also saves money. So think about the transportation costs and all the emissions and the fleet maintenance as well. It also saves energy, reduces greenhouse gases at our landfills, saves landfill space so that we don't have to go to 201 or 202 landfills across Texas, and it also allows companies and local governments to really edge out the competition with a green marketing strategy as well. So zero waste is important because it produces well-paying, green jobs with dignity. You've heard of white-collar jobs, blue-collar jobs. We're proposing green-collar jobs. If you've got 10,000 tons of waste and it goes to a landfill or an incinerator, you can create a job. But if you take that same 10,000 tons and you send it to a composting facility, you'll get four jobs. A recycling facility, 10 jobs. A reuse and repair facility, 75 to 250 jobs for the same So countrywide, we're burying or burning about $11.4 billion every year in potential revenue from materials that were trashed instead of being captured and rescued from the landfill stream and being sold for recycling. So you can see the breakdown here of your plastics, your glass, and the like. So what I've been proposing for several local governments is what we call an Eco Depot, and this is a center that could be constructed on with maybe a current standing warehouse that the city owns, on city-owned property, or a new construction. And of course, there's grants and that type of thing out there that we'll discuss a little bit later, but really looking at this from a holistic approach where a resident could come in, they could drop off their old tires, they could swing around the other side, grab some mulch, put it in their truck, and be on their way. It's kind of an exchange system. And later down the road, of course, the city could decide if it wanted to charge a fee or if it wanted to work with local businesses that needed to offload some of their materials. But this is a great way to have an exchange between the community where they can... It's kind of your trash-to-treasure concept, if you will. So we're gonna get here into some what governments are doing currently, the government actions that are in place. So at the federal level, we really want to look at the... So at the federal level, we really want to look at the introduction of the 2019 Zero-Waste Act. It issues competitive grants for source reduction, organics recycling, e-waste, market development, and public education. At the state level, we've already seen the passage of Senate Bill 649 by Zaffarini. This is bipartisan legislation relating to the promotion and the use of recyclable materials as feedstock for processing and manufacturing. So what this legislation does is it requires our TCEQ and the Texas Office of Economic Development and Tourism to work together to draft a market development plan, which centers public education campaigns to lower contamination rates. And what that means is contamination rates is if you put your recyclables in the trash, that's contamination, because you could have captured that material. It was just disposed of instead of recycled. Same thing with food waste going into the recycling bin. If you find a bunch of banana peels in your recycling, you think the recycler's going to want to take that? Mm-mm. So a lot of times, these materials have to end up in landfill because the contamination rates are so extremely high, it does not make any financial sense for them to go through and sort it. So we also, like I said earlier, I'm on the board of the State of Texas Alliance for Recycling, and STAR does a walk-the-halls event every single legislative session, and we go and promote recycling legislation. We work with the lawmakers that are pushing these types of bills. And I actually spoke with Stan Gertis, Chief of Staff, personally, and he, on the interest of the economic development piece, using recycling and pushing forth zero-waste, he was extremely, extremely interested in further discussing that. So I think that there's a good opportunity there to speak with our local rep at the State House. And any recycling ordinances at the local level, you'll see these bigger cities, yes, San Antonio, Houston, Dallas, Fort Worth, Austin, but Bastrop could implement standards to mirror these types of policies. You can scale it up or down and customize it to fit the city's current state and prep for future capacity needs. So right now, at the federal level, the Inflation Reduction Act and the Department of Energy are offering massive amounts of billions of dollars in grant money available for local governments to apply for infrastructure projects. This is, you know, for waste reduction, public education campaigns, policy development at the local level, food waste composting, and parks and recycling at parks to protect wildlife, climate risk mitigation as well. As far as corporate grants, their HEB has a $25,000 grant that they put out every year that local governments can apply for, even Texas Recycle Day grants through Keep Texas Beautiful. They provide several grant opportunities for local governments to apply to. Of course, the TCEQ provides regional grants through the COGS, the Councils of Government, millions in state grant dollars available for local government use and access to mitigate illegal dumping and to enforce local laws around that, cleanups, recycling system improvements, household hazardous waste collection events, equipment purchases like balers and styrofoam extruders to deal with that kind of hard-to-recycle material, if you will. And so another type of regional grant you'll see with the COGS here, one thing that I want to draw your attention to is right in the middle, maybe just a little bit lower, organic waste management. Only nine entities applied for $600,000. They got almost $67,000 apiece on average to fund their organic management programs. And so the money is out there. It's about getting the community together to find out what the residents, the haulers, and the businesses want to do in order to go after this money to be more responsible for these materials and building out jobs, building out the economic vitality using these types of reuse and recycling systems. So another thing that I like to promote is green marketing for cities. I mean, we're looking to, I think Commissioner Hamner said at one point, we're looking at about a 25% population growth in the next 10 years, and people who are coming here are expecting these kinds of services. And we're, you know, yes, Bastrop has curbside. I live in Tahitian. I gotta pay an arm and a leg just to recycle, so it's not... It's kind of cost prohibitive for me, but you're already offering the recycling programs, but A, are they being used correctly? Are we finding strong levels of contamination or not? We don't know. And then how are we promoting our city and these amenities to people who want to move here? So I think green marketing provides, builds trust among neighbors and businesses. You can implement things like environmentally preferable purchasing practices within city administration. There's an entire EPA guideline around how to purchase materials for, like office supplies and such, on a responsible, environmentally preferable manner. And then consider creating an Office of Sustainability, or at least a board or commission that deals with sustainability, because we're talking about growth of community, and we're talking about people coming into our neighborhood that want to see these services provided. So I think an Office of Sustainability could create public awareness campaigns, sustainable events and workshops sponsored by the city, green certification programs. If you look at the Austin Green Business Leaders Program, it's a way to promote businesses who have met a certain threshold of green business practices, kind of like a self-checklist, if you will. Create business partnerships, data transparency. So if you think about getting the information back from the hauler, how much did you recycle this month? Oh, I don't know. Well, let's go find out and put the numbers on a website where the citizenry can look at that and say, oh, we did 10% better than we did last month. I bet we can do better this month. So really helping people see the numbers of their recycling efforts and helping them drive that passion, drive that motivation a little bit further. And then also incentives and rebates, helping businesses get into the recycling groove, if you will, through incentives and rebates, which could come from the grant opportunities that I mentioned earlier. And then, of course, policy development, helping everybody operate on the same playing field, goes for residents and businesses as well. So again, I am a native Texan. I do not come here. I'm not strutting in here from New York trying to tell you what to do. I'm a local gal, grew up in Beaumont, under the brown hazy skies and rotten egg smells of the plant life, right? So you wonder why I went into environmental protection. But, you know, these are suggestions. These are recommendations based on my 20 years of experience and working with large corporations and city governments. So take what you will and ditch the rest. So I feel that Bastrop is really at a crossroads here. Sustainable growth is the only option. It is the only thing that our community could allow, because we all need to survive, and we all need to have clean air and clean water. We all need to have responsible management of our materials. We all need our jobs. We all need the economic vitality. So this is one way that we can get there as a community. So just some suggestions again. So working with the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce and the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation on Public Education Campaigns to encourage more recycling, reduction of cross-contamination, building trust in the recycling industry, and dispelling any myths. So when people say, I don't recycle because it just goes to the landfill, why should I put in the effort? This is what I'm talking about. Why does it go to the landfill? Well, probably because you have massive contamination rates, and it doesn't make any financial sense for the processor to go through it and sort it out themselves. So what can we do to get the contamination rates down so that we have higher-quality materials that the processors can actually use? So this information can go into utility bill inserts, social media challenges, community pledges, email blasts, in-person business and residential trading sessions. Which Councilman Jenkins is here from Smithville, and I gave this presentation a couple of weeks ago to the City of Smithville, City Council. And he is actually putting in a grant right now with TCEQ for public education on these types of issues right now. So this is something that City of Bastrop might want to look into. The next thing that I suggest is engage in stakeholder meetings. So these would be official, city-run stakeholder meetings for the business and residential input on waste diversion. You're going to look toward empowering a long-range solid waste task force from the residential business and hauler communities. I believe that the residents have a say, but the businesses need to also be at the table as well. And also develop a long-range solid waste task, or long-range solid waste plan based on what the task force develops. And that centers, that could center job creation through the aforementioned waste minimization sectors to stabilize the tax base. And then also create board, again, like I said, create a board and commission focused specifically on sustainability and environmental services. Another suggestion is to conduct a citywide waste audit. And if you're not familiar with a waste audit, it's literally grabbing samples of waste all across the city, from the restaurant sector, the apartments, medical facilities, homes, and literally getting up to your elbows, sorting it out. My business provides this service, so I'm very well-versed in how to do a waste audit. And this allows us to gather baseline measurements and leverage new demands in any upcoming RFP processes for securing hauler services. So once you've got the baseline data, you have a very, a very strong opportunity to demand new services and give you more bang for your buck. So with that, considering implementing curbside composting for residents, so making this a three-ben system, not just a two-ben system. It would be like a small 24-gallon cart. Right now, we've got the big 96-gallon that you roll out to the curb, but something a little smaller that could handle food waste, yard waste. And develop business recycling standards and restaurant food waste diversion programs to capture... Remember, we're capturing resources so that they don't hit the landfill, so that we can build those jobs. So helping businesses come up to a certain set of standards, as well as restaurants diverting food waste away from landfills. And there's a whole different hierarchy for food waste, not just recycling. So requiring also certificates of proof of recycling. And what I mean by that is getting downstream verification. I don't know if you've ever heard, but in Nigeria, there was City of San Antonio, computers found where the hard drive was never wiped. The Navy had hard drives swiped that were never wiped. So, and a lot of times, this e-waste just gets chucked overboard. So anyone who's willing to dive down and go grab that stuff, it's all about recycling verification downstream to make sure information is protected and to make sure that the promises that you're giving to the city, that the hauler is giving to the city, about where the destination is and where that material's being processed is actually verified. So just a couple more. Ensure that financial flow of earnings from recyclable materials and possibly compostable materials in the future is contractually structured for optimization and distributed strategically. This can sustain citywide funding enhancement and expansion of waste minimization practices. Next is use state and federal grants to build out your programs. Again, incentivize more business recycling participation through those rebates, entice material processors to establish corporate entities here in Bastrop. Purchase necessary collection and recycling equipment for hard-to-recycle items. Remember, I had mentioned styrofoam. That stuff flies all over. It's really lightweight. It's hard to transport. So having a condenser and a densifier to extrude this material so that you can collect it and then put it on a truck to have it hauled off, it's going to be a lot better for your dollar if it's collected en masse like that. And then, of course, residential and business outreach, education and activities. And institute recycling programs at all BISD campuses, if it's not already. I couldn't find any information on the ISD website if recycling is available, but, you know, let's teach our kids. Our kids need to know about these processes and feel a part of it. And then next would be formalize a relationship with Keep Texas Recycling, Keep Bastrop County Beautiful, and then engage in their expertise from these groups that they're very eager to help on these topics. And the last is identify and implement new opportunities and optimization for efficiencies. So why don't we survey the residents and businesses on how they would envision a waste-free Bastrop? All cities and building, all city buildings and city-sponsored events could include, or should include, recycling collection. This would allow trained volunteers at the events to help people sort, separate their materials properly into the correct bin, and that could do easy and free education, basically. And, yeah, it could help lower the contamination rates as well. So just a couple of additional resources as I wrap up here. The Zero Waste International Alliance is a really great one. It's kind of the global standards, is where you're going to go for community proclamations and that kind of thing. True Zero-Waste Facility Certification. Have you heard of LEED certification for energy and water? True is through the U.S. Green Building Council, and it is for the waste aspect. So it's kind of like LEED but for trash and recycling and such. So getting your facility certified, again, at that 90% waste diversion threshold. And then several others here. A really great one at the bottom, Story of Stuff Project is great for children if you want to develop these, I guess, larger concepts in a very simplified way. They're little cartoon vignettes for kids that explain big topics in a way that they can understand that's entertaining, so. But my last question for everyone is always, if we're not for zero-waste, how much waste are we for? So with that, I will leave it open for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Savage. Before I go to questions, I want to welcome Councilmember Jenkins from the large city of Smithville for gracing us with his presence. Appreciate it, Jimmy. Thank you. Council, you've heard of Ms. Savage's presentation. Do you have any questions for Ms. Savage?
I have, I do have a couple. Can you explain the difference between upcycling and downcycling?
Can I say it again?
Explain the difference between upcycling and downcycling.
So upcycling is something that you would use a material for in even higher and better use than what it was originally made for. Downcycling, let's say you've got, you've got, you know, paper. And downcycling, once paper's been recycled so many times and it starts to break down, it can't be used as office paper anymore. It has to go to a downcycled place, which would normally be your paper towels at your handwashing stations. So something that can be pulped, it's just that the threads, the threads are so much shorter in the paper hand towels than the really long valuable threads and fibers in the office paper. So it's been recycled far too many times for it to be an office paper anymore. So the downcycling, still a use, is the hand towels.
Thank you. And my last question is, who's currently purchasing waste products?
Waste products like trash?
Yeah, you'd indicated that there was a, that there was a purchase of waste products by different entities in what all? Who's currently purchasing and what are they purchasing? I don't sure if one time that China was purchasing some of our wood pulp products, but is that still happening? Has it been shut off? Is there still that avenue to rid ourselves of these waste products?
Well, there is, but China has drawn the national sword, and it disallows any shipment over to their ports.
I understand, but who's, is there somebody that's actively purchasing waste product now rather than just sitting in transit somewhere?
Well, we have to differentiate what you say waste. Are we talking things that can't be recycled and composted?
Sure.
And that it would normally go to landfill?
Sure.
No.
Okay.
Not trash products.
So that's something that we collectively and collaboratively need to continue working on. Okay.
Yeah, so it's about source separating those materials that can be saved. A lot of times, whenever I say zero-waste is 90%, what's up with that last 10%? It's because products have been designed so poorly in the upstream that, you know, they can't be recycled. You and I as citizens and as consumers don't have any say in what happens in the upstream design, development, and innovation process of a company's product. All we can see is what's on the store shelves in front of us and what we purchase to bring home or to the office. That's it. And then what happens after that leaves our home or office? If it's obsolete, if it's broken? Is there a take-back program, like for computers and televisions? Is there recycling for it? Can it even be recycled? There's a lot of education that needs to happen about what our materials need to go, where our materials need to go, because for the last, I don't know, 40, 50 years, I mean, landfills have been around for over 100 years. These landfills have permits that last 300 years. You mean to tell me 300 years from now, we're going to still be burying crap in a hole in the ground? It's not okay. And so we want... And so, we want sustainable practices, and we need to be a lot more, a lot smarter with our materials and to bring them back into the fold so that we can recreate products and we can put people to work during that whole process.
Great, thank you. Ms. Savage, we appreciate the presentation. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you, Lyle. Thank you so much, Stacy, for that.
You're welcome.
And that was so much wonderful information. But can you just tell me, tell me right now, one thing, just one thing that we as a council can do to, to help with this situation? The top thing that we could just come out and say, hey, let's, let's do this one thing right now. What would you say that would be?
I would say a public education campaign and go for those taxed, or those grant dollars and, and rolling out a public education campaign. A lot of cities will put a recycling bin on someone's curb and then say, hey, there's a, a sign on the recycling bin, follow that. And it's kind of like, done, you know, we've done our duty, we've put the, the cart. Now, are they using it correctly? I don't know. So, we have to, to be able to invest the dollars in the community to say, this is what we want you to do, this is how you do it properly, and this is what's going to get us to that point. And here's what we're going to see after that, which is, let's talk about jobs and creating economic vitality instead of burying everything in a landfill.
Excellent.
So, I would say those, that's two things.
Good.
That, that can, that we can do right now.
Excellent. Thank you.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes, I, I just wanted to say, excellent presentation.
Thank you.
And there was a ton of great information in there.
A ton.
I think the, the biggest things we, we can do, I see, as a city right now, is education. Because we, if you just drive around the city, you drive around the outskirts of the city, we, my opinion, we are probably the, one of the dirtiest cities in the state as far as trash. And I hate to say that, but I bike all, all these little roads around town, and there's just trash everywhere. And I think the education of everyone to just throw trash in a container instead of on the side of the highway is, could go a lot. I mean, the recycling piece of it is expanded version of that, but we have to get people just to throw the trash away, period. And the LEED building and the green building and the separation of materials in our construction sites around town, we don't do that enough. So, there's a lot of things we can do, and the education, I think, is very important. If people don't know how to get rid of their, their trash and garbage, then they're not going to put it in the right place. So, I think education is the key to all that. And if there's grants or something available that the city can apply for to help educate the people, whether it's through media or social media or, or any way, I, I think it starts really at school kid level, and they go home and educate their parents on what they do at school. Then that's going to be a, a huge help for us. But we really need to capture, just putting the trash in a container, much less in a specific kind of container, and I know that's the end, end goal, but just to get it in a container is going to be great. And if we can help do that with getting some education and some grants.
It's, it's about habit change and that education and getting people's emotional tie-in to what happens to the thing that I have in my hand that I need to get rid of and what happens to it downstream. So, helping people connect the dots, not only environmentally but economically, is going to be a, a big undertaking, but it's something that, once it snaps in your brain, you're like, oh, I need to handle this properly. I need to make sure that I'm doing this on my part and helping, help other people change their habits around it as well. We see trash as non-value, but it's actually, you know, like, like you saw, $11.4 billion worth of materials that we're burying that could have been recovered and cycled back into the, the economy.
Yeah, but thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
That's it. Thank you so very much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
It was a good presentation, but this is a business meeting, not a, not a show, so. But I'm sure she appreciated a round of applause. We'll move, we'll move to item 8B, our city manager's monthly report. Madam City Manager.
Mayor, thank you, but I would kindly ask that we move to item 12J because our city engineer is feeling ill, and she has a fill-in for her. However, that fill-in is an outside firm on an hourly basis.
I was going to move that up when we started the regular agenda, individual agenda, but we can move it up now, please. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-173. The City Council of City of Bastrop, Texas, approving professional engineering services contract with Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc. to the Agnes Street widening project to a not-too-exceed amount of $144,700, and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for repealing clause and establishing an effective date.
So, Mayor, let me just introduce Renee right quick. Many of you know, many of you do not. Renee Aguilar has been part of the City of Bastrop's capital improvement program for over two years. He's an unseen force behind the scenes. He's currently working as our project manager, construction manager, in our ongoing CIP design and construction. He's a registered professional engineer in Texas and has over 27 years of experience in civil and environmental engineering.
Well, you're under the gun now, ain't you?
Yes, sir.
Go right ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Appreciate your patience and time this morning, or this evening, sorry. My name is Renee Aguilar. I'm a project manager in the engineering department, and I'm here before you this evening to present for consideration the Agnes Street widening project. And let me get this going. I didn't go and dive into a lot of the details of the project. I wanted to go ahead and talk about some of the background. Previously, the city council has authorized an approval of professional services contract with Kimley Horn and Associates to extend Agnes Street from the existing Agnes Street from Sterling Drive over to the Seton Hospital as part of a development. What we're doing now is considering also widening that, that roadway going towards, from Seton Hospital back to Highway 304 for consideration as part of this contract. It will facilitate better design and traffic flow moving forward, and will also expand the roadway from the current two-lane, two-lane roadway section that you have on Agnes over there by Highway 304 and make it four-lane to match the extension project that is currently under design. And again, as I mentioned before, it will facilitate better traffic movement and flow through that area, going from a, from a two-lane to a four-lane and keeping it four-lane all the way through, from Agnes and Sterling all the way through Highway 304. One thing it would also do is help reduction of some of our construction and some of our design costs, because we're able to incorporate those under one contract for design and under one contract for construction, thereby considerable cost savings over to the city to design all that as one time in one coordination with one contractor. So, briefly, the scope of work would be including widening of Agnes Street from a, from a two-lane to a four-lane roadway, installing approximately 2,000 linear feet of street pavement, and there'd be associated street lighting and signage improvements. And the existing water and wastewater utilities are already existing in the roadways from the previous right-of-way installation at Agnes just south of Seton Hospital.
I don't see sidewalks listed on this.
Currently, on the existing Agnes Street, there is sidewalks on the north, the northbound side, and there are sidewalks on the southbound side of the extension project as well. So, there is a sidewalk that's continuing through there with a transition going from one side to the other. So, this power to give you a better understanding of the limits of the work. I tried to highlight exactly the road alignment for Agnes Street. On your left, you have Highway 304 and the Seton Hospital Drive just to the south of Highway 71. The scope of this project would extend the two-lane existing roadway of Agnes Street from the Seton Hospital Drive over to Highway 304 and make that into a four-lane roadway section. And again, as I mentioned before, there are sidewalks on the north side of that, and the existing utilities are already, are already in the street in the right-of-way. The next limit depiction will actually show that this is a typical four-way, four-way road, sorry, four-lane roadway section that we will be utilizing going down Agnes Street that will connect it back towards Sterling Drive. You can see the utilities on the outside in the right-of-way. Those are already existing as part of this project for the widening, and then the drainage is in the center of the, of the median. So, a little bit of our consultant selection. The consultant for the widening, for the extension project was done in 2018, and they selected Kimley Horn and Associates through the RFQ process in 2018. As far as moving forward with the extension of the, of the widening of the project, would be utilizing Kimley Horn as well to take full advantage of some of the work they're doing now and doing the adjacent Agnes Street extension, as well as making sure that we follow through and take, take advantage of some of the design work that's already happening in that area, utilizing them as part of this amendment. So, a little bit on the project funding. The total project is allocated for $144,700. $21,700 would come from the Bastrop General Fund CIP for Streets, and the remaining amount of $123,000 would come from the Bastrop, Bastrop EDC funds. And a little bit on the project schedule. As I mentioned before, there's, there's two projects that they were looking at. One is already underway as far as the design is the extension of Agnes Street, and the other would be the widening project. These would be all combined together under one project, and right now, the survey has been completed for that entire area. The design deliverable right now is at 60% that we're expecting in January of 2024, with the final design somewhere around April 2024, and then going out for construction soon thereafter. Right now, our estimated construction duration is 12 to 16 months, and the overall construction estimate at this time is about $1.8 million with contingency for the widening of Agnes Street only. So, the staff recommendation is to authorize the approval of professional services contract for the widening of Agnes Street with Kimley Horn and Associates, and not to exceed total amount of $144,700, and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for repealing clause and establishing an effective date. And that completes my presentation. Pending any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. Councilmember Plunkett has a question.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I know that at one point there was, do we have all the right-of-way we need? Have we, has that been taken care of?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Councilmember Crouch.
I, I didn't see the schedule, so I'm glad that you put it up on the screen, because I didn't see a timeline in the, in the packet that we had, and so the April of 2024 was good. And then, is there any construction services or inspections included? I didn't see that included in the contract, I don't think.
So, as, as part of this contract, our, our construction phase services will be negotiated after the bidding has been done.
Okay.
And, and I failed to mention that we have a representative from Kimley Horn here, Ryan Demont. He's here to answer any technical questions you may have as far as the design considerations. But to further expand, the construction phase services will be worked out after the bidding phases are complete.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Mayor Protim Kirkland.
Can you go back to the discussion on the sidewalks?
Yes, sir.
You said something about there's already a sidewalk on one side, and they'll be crossing the street and then using the sidewalk on the other side. And does expanding from two lanes to four lanes not impact that, or you have to destroy the sidewalk because you're widening the road? I mean, like, what, what's involved there?
So, the widening of the road on Agnes Street will take place running south. So, the sidewalk is on the north end of the right-of-way, so the riding would work south from that point. The extension project has got a lot of utilities that are happening in that area, so that's why the sidewalk will be on the south end of that. So, there will be a transition very near where Seton, Seton Driveway and the Agnes Street currently would be crossing together, and that would be where a crossing, where a dedicated crosswalk would be to continuously have those sidewalks connected. Did I explain that right, Mayor?
Yeah. There's a...
You have to get the microphone.
Come up to the mic, please.
Mayor, council, thank you. There's an enhanced sidewalk that will actually be, or crosswalk that we'll be designing at that transition, whether it's just some flashers or, we haven't quite decided on exactly what it's going to be yet, but there's provisions in our contract to make sure that, that's a safe crossing. We wouldn't want folks just crossing without any kind of warning for vehicles there.
I'll just remind council, this, this was approved a while back. It, it was a four to a two right at one of the busiest intersections. So, we went back and said, no, that's not what we want. On top of that, it did not include sidewalks. So, we're sending them back to say, we need sidewalks. The residents have said, we need connectivity, we need to be able to walk. This is one of the most crucial areas to get people out of Pocom Park, to get people across from an east-west standpoint, south of 71.
Is this response on sidewalks? Is that okay for you?
Yes.
Okay.
We're having to work within the confines of the right-of-way that we do have. They've made some design changes to, to make it work and keep the project going. We are under some grant timelines, so.
Got it.
We are. Thank you. Move to approve R-2023-173. I have a motion, Councilmember Plunkett. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Councilmember Crouch, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will, call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passed. And Ms. Aguilar, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Have a great evening. Thank you.
You came through. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Fabiola needs to go home.
Moving back to item 8B, our city manager's monthly report.
I will try to be quick to make up some time. This is the November 2023 report. We'll go briefly through some management projects, some capital improvement projects, ongoing developments in the area, our staffing changes and shortages, and then also where we stand with overview of sales tax information. So, the big high-level projects that we have are the Hotel Convention Center. We sent that back out. Our city attorney and our consultant have been working on a revised RFP that has come to fruition, that is expected to hit the streets in the next day or so, so that we have an expected return date of March of 2024. We do have several flags of hotels already coming into our area, so I'm not sure what we're going to get back. I'll just, I'll just make sure I, I let the council know that. We do have a draft transportation plan. We sort of put a pause on all of our main master plans as we work through the code rodeos and work through the development process. We expect to pick that up again in March of 2024. The county is also going through their draft transportation plan. We had a chance to review. We had no substantive comments for the county's plan and are working side by side in the, with the county for any areas that need additional right-of-way that the city is able to exact. We met with Campo just yesterday regarding the Loop 150 corridor study, and if you recall, that was a very, very, it was an odd conversation because there was notice, nobody got noticed. There was only a few of you that ended up being noticed, but then we had a open house. So, we got all of that squared away. The plan is to bring a presentation to the city council at the second January meeting, and then for the mayor to appoint one or two liaisons to a steering committee that would then have input as to what's going to happen to Chestnut, essentially, in the long term. We continue to work through the draft, the drainage master plan. As many of you know, that had a very, very, very big sticker number, and we need to look through that. What are the positives and where is acquisition more favorable than actually trying to resolve a multimillion drainage problem that may not resolve the drainage problem? So, we will continue to go work through that. We move on to the athletic field RFP. I have been meeting with the EDC executive team. I've broached the topic. They seem to be in favor. We need to vet that out a little bit further. In partnership with our Parks and Rec Master Plan, Stantec was able to, will be providing a rendering or layout. Terry's not in the audience? Oh, you are. Okay. Do we have an expected timeline for that? Okay. So, we have some ideas to begin to flush out. We'll at least begin to prepare some renderings, and that project, if it can come to fruition, has multiple, multiple partnership and funding opportunities. So, I sent many of you a link to an athletic facility that was just, that just broke ground in Corpus Christi to the tune of about 24 million, and again, same multiple funding opportunities that would make something like that come to fruition. We continue working our welding partnership with BISD, and the street maintenance and repair plan will be coming to you in the January timeframe as we list out projects. We did meet with the county. You will be having an inter-local agreement with Bastrop County as they will help us begin to repair our streets in our periphery, things that are in Tahitian, Piney Ridge, for example. While it is not the exact city standard, some improvement is better than no improvement. And the... And the county has a bang-up deal for the city in that we would just pay for the material. The county would pay for the labor. So, that was a discussion we had with Commissioner Hamner. We plan to have the same discussion with Commissioner Beckett, as both of those commissioners are in our city. Franchise agreement. You've heard about the ambulance service. You don't get the messages, but I do. There says no or unknown ETA for ambulance services in the county and in the city. So, the county approached the city to authorize a franchise agreement. The city council said, if we can get all of the players on board, then go ye forth and do it. Seton is still working out some of the last details for that, but we expect to have that hammered out and brought to you in also the January timeframe. Correx is on your agenda today. The Aqua effluent resale will be on the January agenda. We've reached final draft, so we feel we're very close to that, which will affect many of our development partners, south of 71 in the 304 area, specifically Ironwood and right across the Colorado Bend project. The Bastrop County African-American Cultural Center and Freedom Colonies Museum began to have conversations with me and to sit with Sylvia a few months ago regarding some proposed expansion plans that they have for the property they are leasing out from the Kerr Center. They have some, they're pretty far along in their planning, and so they are approaching the city for a lease on City Park property for some improvements to the museum, and we will begin working through that and bring something to council hopefully in early February. Capital improvements. I just gave you the bullet list, because if I gave you the full where are we on everything, I think it would be overwhelming. You heard Agnes Street extension. We're beginning to make some massive headway on that. That's important. We have multiple apartment complexes and multiple hotels in the Agnes Street area, so the sooner we can get Agnes up and going, the sooner traffic has some relief in that area. The wastewater treatment plant, Phase 1 and Phase 2, we continue. I was told water ran through the plant late last week. We have a little bit of issues, but we're at least closer to getting the plant to be fully operational. The old Iron Bridge, we've received the engineering cost estimate, which is a little bit over $1 million, which is Hewlett-Zollars. It's an engineer that specializes in historic bridges and one that we had in RFQ, one we had selected through the RFQ process, significantly less than what the estimate that we thought we were going to need for engineering services. We continue to work through design of the transfer lift station in Force Main. At one point, we're looking at some perhaps redesigns to see if that was even going to be a possibility. We're still marching toward completion of that. We're still looking at 24 months, even in the best of cases where we can acquire the necessary right-of-way in that area. The wells, we're expected to be pumping water in the May-June timeframe, so the well project remains on time and on path, so that is a good thing. Blakely Lane also, we've continued marching toward. We know we're going to need the expansion of Blakely Lane as Berluson East, Pearl River, and all of the other things come along there. We have gotten initial surveys. We're getting title commitments and working with our city attorney's firm to move toward acquisition of the necessary right-of-way there. Blakely Lane becomes very expensive, because that is where our, some of our major water transmission facilities will need to be to service not just one area of town, but the entire city. Financial Way ran into some bumps and bruises along the way. We missed a significant portion because construction was moving faster than the plat. The city didn't necessarily have authority to go issue a notice to proceed to the contractor. We had a special BEDC meeting last week. I'm told that a pre-construction meeting is happening on Friday to get Financial Way going. Fairview Cemetery design continues. We expect that to be in the mid-year timeframe as we try to figure out funding also to get the Fairview Cemetery expansion project really up and running. Development trends, well, shoo, it continues. Multiple hotel sites. Right now, we're looking at five, potentially seven, depending on some property that is, one is speculating, two is getting closer to potential sale. We have many, many, many single-family and multifamily and mixed-use projects right now on the board, more than 6,000 LUEs. Very, very, very big numbers. Pearl River is 16 apartment units, and Pecan Grove is, I believe, 16 or 17 apartment units, and that doesn't include all of the housing in Valverde, all of the housing at Ironwood, and everything else that is in our periphery. You will see two potential projects in executive session this evening. Staffing priorities. Every time I feel like we're staffed at police, Vicki loses somebody else. So, we're working through that. She's gotten aggressive on recruitment, especially in terms of cadets finishing the academy. She's got a great plan she's going to bring forward. Hopefully, we can get that come to fruition. We did advertise for a new municipal court administrator. We have some wonderful people on interview, and I'm hopeful we'll be able to make a selection very quickly. We did hire a new director of finance. We've had some transition conversations. She's expected to transition full-time at the end of the school year. She will be doing 50% of her time on-site and 50% of her time virtual. As we continue to grow and feel the growing pains of how popular Bastrop is, anybody who is at the Christmas parade understands, my goodness, record numbers. We're going to be shifting some resources to provide some additional Main Street assistance, but I will probably be adding at least a part-time staffer in that role to help keep things moving forward, especially as we continue with events every single month. I've asked staff to send the city secretary the calendar. Your calendar should be very full. You should be seeing many, many pings on the calendar as of the last couple of hours of all of the events that are coming up. In February is Mardi Gras, so that's the next one. We're going to get through the busy Christmas season. We're going to go through MLK in January. We march right into Mardi Gras. We march right into Easter. We march into the Fourth of July. We march into Yesterfest, and on and on and on and on and on. So, good things happening. Same thing for Public Works. We can't hire an operator to save our life. They are in complete demand, operators and engineers, so we continue to try to be creative. I'm working with DEI and working with HR on where are other creative places to post these positions, so that we get qualified applicants, and it's not just on TML. We're actually using LinkedIn. We're using any variety of sources. And as I've told the staff, today's workforce expects the job to come to them. They wanted to flash in front of them on their socials or in some other way. Gone are the days where people go to a website to go look for a job. Moving on to sales tax revenue trends. '23 was a really good year, $12 million plus in sales tax. We continue to have a robust economy. We're still being conservative in our planning and our expenditures, because we know we've got to save for that rainy day, and on top of that, the development investment that we have to make is significant, and so in an effort to keep the downward pressure on rates, right, we've got to be smart with our money. So, I'll entertain any questions.
Counsel, any questions for our city manager?
I just have one.
Councilmember Lee.
A lot of what you said is not in what we got. Is this just a draft? I see a lot of crossed-out lines. Are you going to be adding on to this?
No, that is your report. What is crossed out was the proposed date. So, for example, if it had a November 23 date, and it is now December 23, I crossed out November 23, so that you could have an idea of how the date moved.
I see some paragraphs in here crossed out. Maybe I...
They should be supplemented by a...
Yeah. So, because I looked for it online, I want to say yesterday or day before, and I didn't see this online, so is it...
No, you have it today.
Okay. So, are we, are there any more revisions? Because like, that slide's not in here. A lot of some...
No, this is all in there. The athletic field RFP is in there.
What, this slide here, where is that? In this?
You don't have the slides. You have the report.
Okay. So, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, your sales tax trend. No, you don't have a sales tax trend.
So, there were some things mentioned in the presentation that I couldn't find in here. I don't know if they were just in different places.
Sure, I'm happy to work that.
I just wanted to make sure it was the same as what you just presented, because there was a lot of good stuff.
Everything is in there, with the exception of the sales tax revenue, but because my introductory sheet had a piece on the budget, Angela pulled together, Angela with BDC, pulled the numbers together fairly quickly, because she's an overachiever, and so we included that.
And then you are going to put it online?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions for our city manager? Thank you for the brief synopsis.
We're busy.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. Thank you. We will move on to item number nine, staff and board reports, which there's none, which brings us to our citizen comments. Madam City Secretary, I have one citizen comment. Do we have any other?
No, Mayor.
The one I have is Carrie Fossler. If you will come to the microphone, state your name and address, and three minutes.
Hi, Mayor Council. I'm Carrie Fossler, 1903 Main Street, Bastrop, Texas. We were the recipient of a cultural arts mini-grant, and it was very successful this weekend, and I'm here to tell you thank you. I know you worked through them, and I'm going to tell them thank you as well, but as the Bastrop Bollywood blast we had this weekend, last year, we had something similar. Last year, we had 64 teachers last year fly in from four countries, and we had 10 locals participate. This year, we had 59 locals participate, and three supporting teachers come in from local communities. Our community is growing. We are bursting out of the rec center, literally bursting out, so thank you, and we need a rec center. That's all. Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate all the work you do within our community. No further citizen comments. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Has anybody wished to pull any item off of the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor.
Eleven foxtrot.
We're taking 11F off of the consent agenda. Anyone else on council? Does anybody in the audience wish to move anything off of the consent agenda? Seen none. Madam Secretary, if you will read the consent agenda with the exclusion of item 11F.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 11A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the November 14, 2023 Development Code Rodeo and November 18, 2023 Special Call Meeting. Item 11B, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023177 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving an ad valorem tax assessment and collection contract between Bastrop County and the city of Bastrop, attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents. Item 11C, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-181 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving an ad valorem tax assessment and collection contract between Bastrop County and the city of Bastrop for the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District, attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents. Item 11D, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-41 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing and allowing for an increase in the employee contribution rate to Texas Municipal Retirement System and adopting annually accruing updated service credits and transferring updated service credits and annually accruing annuity increases, also referred to as cost of living adjustments for retirees and beneficiaries of deceased retirees, as attached in Exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, enactment, repealer, severability, providing for an effective date, codification, proper notice, and meeting. Item 11E, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-171 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving a task order with MWM Design Group to provide the services of city engineer in the amount of $65,650 attached in Exhibit B, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
Counsel, the city secretary has laid out the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee.
Second.
I have a second with Councilmember Crouch. Madam Secretary, if you will, call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes. Thank you, counsel. We will now move to item 11F, which has been pulled off the consent agenda. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-42 of the Bastrop City Council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Article 1.10 Parks, Section 1.10.002 Park Rules, and providing for findings of fact, repeater, severability, codification, effective date, proper notice, and meeting. Ms. Moore.
Good evening. Thank you very much. This is for second reading. There has been a slight change. City manager, do you want to point that?
Well, Mayor Protem Kirkland and city attorney have changed swimming to engaging in activity, so would either of you care to?
Yeah, I can, certainly. So, the reason why I pulled this is so that we can make a minor floor amendment to the very last sentence. Where we landed at the end of the last discussion, the last sentence read, furthermore, the city of Bastrop does not assume any liability for any persons swimming in the Colorado River. However, since we expanded the first sentence to allow them to do many things in addition to swimming in the river, it made sense to exclude that liability statement to any activity in the river. And so, the floor amendment would be, furthermore, the city of Bastrop does not assume any liability for any persons engaging in any activity in the Colorado River, so it's a substitute for the word swimming and insert engaging in any activity.
He's certainly laid out the changes, and I imagine the city attorney has no objections to those changes from a legal perspective?
No objection, Mayor Council. It makes perfect sense, and in response to that, I made the non-substantive change to change the title of that subsection, rather than being swimming or wading in the Colorado River, it'll just be activity in the Colorado River. That has no substance to it, but it fits the language we're adding below.
Thank you, sir. Does everybody understand what we're doing on this second reading? I will entertain a motion.
Okay. Move to approve with the changes indicated. You want to read them out loud? I'm sorry.
Sure. Read them out loud. So, under 110.002 Park Rules, change the heading to activity in the Colorado River, and then for the last sentence, or I can just, just three sentences, so, "The public may enter, wade, swim, or engage in any aquatic activity at their own risk and shall obey all posted signs. No lifeguards will be on duty on the banks of the Colorado River. Furthermore, the city of Bastrop does not assume any liability for any persons engaging in any activity in the Colorado River." And second.
Does that clarify your motion, sir?
Absolutely.
I have a motion, and Councilmember Plunkett, a second, with Mayor Protem Kirkland. Any further discussion? Seen none. Madam Secretary, if you will, call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. I appreciate those changes. We will now move to items for individual consideration. Item 12A, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-178 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, regarding the Central Appraisal District election voting for the 2024 Board of Directors, establishing a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Madam City Secretary, and I will provide whatever backup I can.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are before you to bring the candidates that CAD provided us with. At the October 10 council meeting, council voted on five candidates to submit to CAD for the appraisal district board for the election, so those names have been added in this list, and there are... So, those names have been added in this list, and there are seven names in total on the list. The city of Bastrop will have a total of a hundred and ninety-two votes. You can vote for, I think it's, you can vote for however many you want, or you can put all of your votes for one candidate. So, I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions for city secretary? You know, we, there are seven candidates up for that. There appeared to be two or three that are connected with the Bastrop community, and there was a, or there is, a county commissioner who is one of the nominees and currently serves on it also. We're not held to voting for five. We're not held voting for one. I looked over the list, and I'd like to have as much Bastrop community representation on there, and then I had no issue with having one of our county commissioners on there so that he understands from his perspective. And I'm going to put forward to y'all the four names, David Redd, Bill Archer, Justin Besner, and David Glass. We take a hundred and ninety-two votes and divide it by forty-eight votes each. But I will listen to other, or entertain other options, and we can vote on it when Plus, I'll entertain a motion. So moved. So, so that everybody understands, I imagine your motion is the four names that I suggested to put forth an even division of our hundred and ninety-two votes. I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett, a second from Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Moving on to item twelve B, consider action to approve resolution number R dash two zero two three dash one six nine of city council, the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving the Bastrop Cultural Arts Commission to accept a grant in the amount of eight thousand, one hun, eight thousand dollars even from the Texas Commission on the Arts for Administrative Program Cost. Ms. Butts?
Good evening, mayor and council. Yes, this is one of two grants that Texas Commission on the Arts has awarded the city of Bastrop for our cultural arts district. This is an operational support grant. It's a multi-year support, so it's up to two years, and you would reapply on the odd number of years, and that comes with a yearly report. So, this would cover, it's eight thousand dollars from the grant with an eight thousand dollar match. The grant would cover our five thousand dollars to, for regular cleaning of our city art statues, and then printing materials and artistic salaries, and then our match would go towards four thousand dollars towards artistic salaries based off of our cultural arts work plan, and then four thousand dollars for marketing and promotion of our projects.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. Butts? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Crouch. Any further discussion? None indicated. Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Stay there, Ms. Butts. We have twelve C, consider action to approve resolution of R dash two zero two three dash one seven zero, the city council, the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving the Bastrop Cultural Arts Commission to accept a grant in the amount of sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars from the Texas Commission on Arts for a Cultural Arts District project.
Yes, so this is the second grant from Texas Commission for the arts. This is for a cultural district project. The Cultural Arts Commission has been working on an iconic art project that is centered around our Bird City designation. So, we submitted for a grant for that project, and they have awarded us with the sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars. So, that additional money allows us to put up two sculptures in town in our cultural district, and I have like a map of what the cultural district is. That iconic art project is to connect ninety-five through Chestnut to bring awareness and visitor traffic downtown, and that is a multi-year project. So, our first, we already have an artist for the first, the first part of that program that is a part of the cultural arts work plan. It's like twenty-five thousand dollars. That'll be a mosaic piece that's going out in front of the convention center. So, this grant money is going to be going to the second phase of that program, and the art call will be pushed out in January for that project. And here's just kind of a timeline for that. The art call deadline will be in March, and then the Cultural Arts Commission will review and select artists, and then installation date will be set for August, and reporting back to TCA on the outcomes of that installation. And then there's like a lot of requirements as far as like, you know, making sure we recognize TCA and the endowment for their contribution to this project.
Certainly.
That's all. If y'all have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Butts? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion with Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland, a second from council, I didn't hear, Councilmember Lee. No further questions. Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Butts, for all you do. Appreciate it. We're going to move to item twelve D, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number two zero two three dash four three of the Bastrop City Council, the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter eleven Taxation, Article one one point zero two Sales Tax, to amend Section eleven point zero two point zero zero three Economic Development Sales and Use Tax Levy and to enact Section eleven point zero two dash zero zero four Street Maintenance and Repair Sales and Use Tax Levy and providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, codification, effective date, proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the January ninth, twenty twenty-four council agenda for second reading. Ms. Allen?
Good evening, mayor and council. As y'all know, on November the seventh, the city of Bastrop held a special election for Proposition A, which would allow the city to create a street maintenance and repair fund without increasing the current tax for local sales tax. This is done by reallocating half-sent sales tax allocated towards EDC, and it would allocate three-eighths of a cent to the street maintenance repair fund, and a quarter of the cents would remain with the EDC. To give you an idea of the budget that we're talking about, for FY twenty-four, the estimated sales tax to EDC was four point four million. With the implement of the new proposition, it would allocate three point three million to the street maintenance fund and leave one point one million with the EDC. Staff is recommending the first reading and move to include on the January ninth agenda for the second and final reading.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. Allen? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion with Councilmember Crouch.
Second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Ms. Allen. Moving on to item twelve E, consider action to approve resolution number R dash two zero two three dash one seven nine of the city council, the city of Bastrop, Texas, consenting to the annexation of certain territory into the Centex Drainage District, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Correio?
Thank you, mayor. This is, I think, the first of what will begin to be a regular event as we try to deal with drainage in a county where the city and the counties don't have regional drainage plans. HOAs have tried to solve the issue. Developers have tried to put in Property Owners Association, Homeowners Association, et cetera, et cetera, to deal with it. The Centex Drainage District is a district that is a taxing entity that will address drainage specifically in, there's two subdivisions it's working in. It has completed its work for La Salamela subdivision, which is near FM twenty-one and FM three twenty-five. They've received their necessary approvals from the state. They've received support from the county, and they need city consent to create the district. City has no issue with the district being created.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for our city manager? Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
I'm trying to figure out what question I want to ask, but it's in the ballpark of, does the city have any liability for this, not this action, but for this drainage district? Like, for instance, let's say it's massively undersized, and they've got a ugly drainage problem on their hands that they couldn't possibly afford, kind of like our own in the city of Bastrop. Does any of that liability fall to us at all, or are we simply performing a ministerial act here?
Mayor Pro Tem, I believe it's a ministerial act. If we don't approve this consent, they have the ability to petition TCEQ, much like somebody would for a MUD. The city of Bastrop did not create this district. We don't fund them. We do not have a contract with them, so I don't see any basis for us to be held liable if ultimately some of their efforts are ineffective.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Meyer. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Passage unanimously. We will move to item twelve F. I will tell y'all prior to us taking a vote, we do have one citizen signed up to speak. Item twelve F, hold a continuation to the public hearing, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number two zero two three dash three eight of city council, the city of Bastrop, establishing and adopting transportation impact fees, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirteen, Article thirteen point one two, by enacting Sections one three point one two point zero nine four through one three point one two point zero nine nine, providing for definitions, providing for assessment of said impact fees, providing for the general administration of said impact fees, providing for a severability clause, providing for an effective date and open meetings clause, providing adoption, repealer, severability, filing and enforcement, and establishing an effective date. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, mayor. We have Jake with Kimmel Horn. I'm going to say Jake State Farm one day, but it's Jake with Kimmel Horn. This has been a topic the Planning Commission has wrestled with most of the summer. They made some recommendations to the council. You've heard it. We've left the public hearing open. This is the continuation of that public hearing. There was some email correspondence back and forth on the amounts, and I'll let Jake go through that. Essentially, you're adopting a transportation impact fee that would go to assist in the creation of new roads, and that was an area that was previously funded by the BEDC in some of our very highly trafficked and commercially driven roadways. Since the BEDC revenue has been greatly reduced, this is an alternate method for paying for those new roads and those new connection points.
Good evening, mayor and council. Good to be with you again. I think we have a brief presentation to recap where we were in September, just to reorient everybody. I'll try to keep it short. So, again, as city manager mentioned, we left a public hearing open. Why did we do that? There's a specific provision in the law that says, once the public hearing closes, the council must take an action within thirty calendar days of the public hearing closing. That public hearing was left open on September twenty-sixth, and it's been more than thirty days, so that's why we're back to talk about that. And there was also a first reading of the ordinance on the twenty-sixth, so tonight we're here for that and the second reading. As a quick recap, we did, there was a motion to adopt the study itself and the maximum fees. As a reminder of what these are, it's two thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars per service unit in service area A and one thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars in service area B for a single-family house. The maximum fees established by the study that y'all have already adopted is just over eighty-six hundred dollars per house on the west side of town, west of the Colorado River, and then on the east side of town, it would be fifty-two oh four. Last time, we discussed quite a bit on the, how long of a grace period should be allowed. As a reminder, there's a minimum of twelve months required for previously plotted properties. There was a discussion around an eighteen-month period, and there was also discussion around rates. I'll go through a couple slides just to remind what the Impact Fee Advisory Committee submitted to y'all and what we talked about. And then there was also a discussion around exemptions and reductions in fee in the ordinance before you tonight. There is a provision for exempting up to one ADU per residential lot, so that is included in the ordinance before you tonight for the second reading. Big fat charts, but simply put, we came back from the Impact Fee Advisory Committee meeting, and their recommendation at that August thirty-first meeting over the summer was to adopt a flat fee across the entire city, and they wanted to set it at sixty-five percent of the maximum in B, which was trying to come up with an average amount between the two areas. B, again, was lower than A in terms of what you could charge, and that rate also kind of fell in the middle of what we were seeing from other cities and what they're collecting is what they recommended. As a reminder, this is just that pie chart again, talking about the need versus what that would result in. And a very important caveat note for the projected fee, this doesn't account for less money coming in due to that grace period of twelve months or longer, any reductions in fees from things like ADUs not having to pay or anything that's actually built instead of being paid in. So, again, if it says forty-nine million here for that scenario, that doesn't mean you actually get forty-nine million in the bank over a ten-year period. Again, what does this mean? The red of the pie means that that's what you need to pay for for the people already on the roads. The blue piece is a credit that's required that we did a calculation for, for future ad valorem tax from the growth, and then the yellow in this scenario would be what's left over in addition to the red and the blue to pay for as far as the need in that hundred and thirty-two million. Again, we don't expect any revenues if you were to pass the second reading tonight to come in, in the short term, due to that grace period. It would ramp up over time in the scenario we talked about last time. If it was eighteen months, you wouldn't see as much until twenty twenty-five. If it was twelve months, you would start seeing more in twenty twenty-five if you started collecting at the beginning of twenty-five, or twenty-four, sorry, end of twenty-four if it was one year from tonight. And then, again, the maximum fee, assuming that if you were to collect a hundred percent of the maximum fee, the recovery we're looking at is about seventy-seven percent, which is a pretty high recovery percentage, if you were to collect that, to the tune of about a hundred million or ten million per year. In terms of ordinance updates, the ones from the discussion that Sylvia, the city manager, mentioned a few minutes ago was to go to the twelve-month grace period. That's what's showing in the ordinance within effective date of today, if the second reading were to pass and y'all were to adopt them, and to set those collection rates at the maximum fees, which would then be collected starting in December twelfth of twenty twenty-four, one year from today. With that, I will pause for questions and discussion.
Just to point out, we discussed a twelve-month grace period. We went backwards at eighteen months. Your presentation shows eighteen months, so that would actually be June of twenty twenty-five if we went with eighteen months.
Yeah, the current ordinance tonight does show twelve months, but, yeah. Could be changed.
Councilmember Meyer?
That clarifies totally what I was going to ask you, because I remember early the eighteen, but then I definitely know that we discussed the twelve-month and thought that that was the best option because the infrastructure is not going to slow down, so we needed to not allow that extra. So, thank you for that update on that.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Can you walk me through how we get from, say, twenty-three forty-nine in service area A and fourteen fourteen in service area B to the, like, eighty-six hundred and sixty-five hundred?
Yeah, sorry. So, that's, a lot of times the cost per vehicle mile or service unit is a dimensionless number that doesn't make a lot of sense until you apply it to the lane use chart in the study in the ordinance to convert it to a lane use type. So, the conversion factor there, which is a little less than four, that represents the trip length and the trip rate from a single-family house. So, for a single-family house, it's a little less than one trip per house in the afternoon. That's the study period we look at for these conversion factors, and then the trip length is a little less than four miles as well for that. So, that's where we get the, I think it's around a three-point-two, approximately, don't quote me on the number right in front of me, but that's how that comes out. And so, depending on what it is, that on what it is, that single file, whatever the development type is, that number's going to vary based on the development type.
And so is that 8,644 in this documentation somewhere?
That's what the, so the, there's a chart that would convert, and that's called the lane use vehicle mile equivalency table. That is in the study, and that's what converts the fees to, from the base service unit numbers. And that's what was previously adopted, so.
Got it. I see it now. It needs to be in our ordinance too, so that's why I was, okay. That's where my question was going, is how does someone, because if you just read the ordinance, skim the ordinance, maybe that's a better way to put it, you might think it's 2349 and 1414 instead of, you know, 8,600 and 5,204. So that's why I was trying to figure out how we get there. But I got it now. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, mayor. There was some mention, also, we talked about the ADUs, putting either some type of, if we're a second ADU, basing it on square footage, or how much impervious cover, I think we said 50%, but basing that cost on square footage. Was there any discussion about that or anything?
Councilmember Lee, I think the initial discussion was everything gets a fee, and then you guys said no, one additional ADU gets no fee.
Right.
And then folks are already allowed an ADU by right, and then also an additional, like a garage, studio, those kinds of things. That's not considered an ADU. The only thing that would be charged here is if a second additional dwelling unit went on. So if you had three living structures on a lot.
And were we not, I thought we talked about considering the size of that second one, though, because someone might build a structure just not needing electricity or water, but maybe a workshop or something that's not, they're not living in it, they're just working out of it.
So if that classifies as a storage or a workshop and it's not an ADU, then no, it's not going to be assessed the fee. I think what you're talking about in the percentage wise was when we talked about a major remodel, if somebody was like adding a ginormous segment of house. And I think you guys said, no, we don't want to deal with that either. Folks get to, folks get to do additions as they need to do additions. So that'd be part of the building permit. If somebody came in and did a, like a she shed, a work structure or something like that, and it had no AC, no running water, no toilet, yeah, it's not considered an ADU.
Let me just make sure I didn't have anything else. No, I think that's covered it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. And that explanation also by our city manager about the shed or the garage, just for clarification for our citizens, that is not an ADU. An ADU is a living unit. So I just don't want them to get confused on what we're saying that is.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Lee, your light is still on. Councilmember Crouch, your light was on earlier, but?
Yeah, I don't have a question.
Okay, good. If y'all have no other questions for Jake, I do have, our public hearing is still open, and call David Glenn, who we all know. If you'll state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. David Glenn with the Home Builders Association. Good to see you all tonight. Thank you for having me. We're at 7800 Shaw Creek Boulevard in Austin, Texas. I had sent an email. Hopefully you had a time to take a look over it. Y'all have had a lot on your agenda, so if not, that's fine. I'll walk you through some of the points. Our first ask is that the council stick with the advisory committee's recommendation. It's not often that we say that, but I think that they did spend a lot of time with it, and the 65%, as Jake mentioned, is in line with what a lot of other cities are collecting, especially in their first year. Some cities you'll see are collecting more today, but they had a phased-in approach, for example, Round Rock, where over a three-year period, they increased the amount that they were collecting. Even without the additional grace period, we think the 65% makes sense. We also like the idea of a flat fee. Reason being is it's easy to calculate, and for the city, it's much easier to explain to a property owner that the fee is flat across the city as opposed to you have to pay 8,000 per house on one side of the street and I pay 4,000 per house on the other side. If the city is considering going to the maximum, we would ask that they offer some sort of grace period beyond the state mandated minimum. I'm not aware of any city that hasn't offered up at least some sort of additional grace period beyond that 12 months. We recognize the need for infrastructure is happening today, but it does give builders and developers time to back that into their pro formas. Round Rock, for example, they got to 80% over a three-year by allowing a phased-in approach. I think it is important to remember that this is a pass-through fee. It will affect subdivisions with some of those most affordable starter homes that are being built. Homes in Service Area A, the impact fee there is 21% higher than the next highest in the region, and that's Georgetown. So Bastrop will be, at least especially in Service Area A, the most expensive transportation impact fee in the region. And just so y'all know, it's my members' goal to reach as many customers as possible. They want to make sure that that market reaches broad with interest rates increasing, and we've seen home prices in Bastrop increase 30% in the last two years. This is just another thing that makes it that much harder to achieve that housing. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Plunkett.
As we've talked many times, you know, I am concerned about, you know, competitiveness in the area. So, you know, but I do understand that we have a huge bill to pay in terms of, you know, streets that are needed to be built. So I guess I would like to have some indication from the city manager, you know, what you think about those two competing issues. Because I know you work both sides of that in dealing with the developers as well as, you know, having to pay the bills.
I'm losing my hair more and more. I will say Bastrop is in a unique position from those cities around us in that we do have the wastewater treatment plant about to go open, and we do have the wells about to expand to additional capacity, so much so that there are utility providers around our area who are looking to us to service. So we're in a unique position competition-wise. Can they go to Flugerville? Can they go to Georgetown? Can they go to any other city? Yes, absolutely they can. We are also in a unique position with the proximity to Tesla and the new Samsung plant and everything that's going on around here, that I think there are areas where we will have a captive audience, no matter what. The downside to that is it is difficult for folks to understand what the impact is going to be. And so, for example, this fee is paid at building permit. There is a couple of projects that we know are underway that will have a significant bill at the end of next year to pay. But it's a significant construction of a road, Blakey, for example, that needs to be constructed. And so is it on the entire general fund, the existing residents who are here who already hate us because development is happening so fast? Is it out of their pocket? Or is it a cost share? And I'm more inclined to say it's a cost share. I would have no issue with a phased-in approach to get us to the maximum rate, perhaps over a three-year period, where we start at one particular rate and ratchet up over a period of three years. I think that gets us, I think that gets us well underway. It gets us past whatever interest rate hump we may be feeling, because things have slowed a little bit as interest has, you couldn't tell from the number of pre-development meetings that we have, but we had, you know, two times as many earlier in the year. So I do not believe this needs to be completely borne by the folks who already live here, and I am in favor of the transportation impact fee in some way, shape, or form. But I do not have any issue with us phasing it in over a three-year approach with only a 12-month grace period.
Okay, yeah, I agree with that. And no, I agree they're coming anyway. I'm, you know, part of, but what, what he said is correct. It is a pass-through fee. It's going to show up on, on the cost of the property, which means it's going to hit, you know, everyone, including, you know, the people who are already here. So so if we, I guess I would propose that we approve this with the phased-in approach at a third, a third, and a third?
So I would say year one would be, yes, 33% of the 8,644, year two, 66% of the 8,644, and then year three, 100%.
Right.
Councilmember Crouch.
I, I've, I've thought of the raising the tax to a higher level also, and then also have taken into consideration the cost as, as it is, as a pass-through cost, and then thinking of the interest rates that continue to go up. And then I don't want to be in a position to where we're pricing people, since it is a pass-through cost, out of a house. So if this is a way to keep people out of an apartment and get them into a house as a first-time home buyer, if this additional cost and the interest rates going up would keep somebody out of a house potentially, because the end user's going to pay, pay the tax. I don't really have an issue with the phased-in piece. If we, I think we ought to look at it as, as how it was written and how it was priced originally. And then if we, if we want to phase it in, we can always phase it in. And I think I remember, do we have to vote later if we want to raise it to a higher rate?
So, so two things I want to, I want to, I want to take off my city manager hat, and I'm going to put my private side, public service, credit counselor, housing counselor hat on, because that's a hat I wore for about eight years. And David, put your thick skin on. The, the reality of it is, just like in a public improvement district, or just through any pass-through assessment, there's a variety of ways the builders can get creative. In an 8,644 assessment, half of it will go to the lot, so the developer who's buying the lot will pay 4,400 of that, and the other 4,400 with a markup will go to the sale of the house. If you're creative and know how to do your financing, that's how you're going to do it. A $4,400 assessment on your house over 30 years is a $40-plus payment, but that's exponential over 30 years. That $40, you know, that little amount, that $4,400 ends up costing, you know, 20,000 over the life of the house. Those are things to consider as you're talking about a family where $40 is the difference between a tank of gas and not. So I hear you. There are protections if you choose to put them in for low-income housing and subsidized housing where they're not subject to the assessment. And I'll like, I'll let Jake speak to that.
Yeah, so the, the low income one you talked about, that's the, we call it the capital A affordable as defined by the Code of Federal Regulations. It's a very low, low number. So it wouldn't protect most developments probably going on in Bastrop, just to be clear on that. The one thing I did want to clarify on the third, third, a third, they are collected at building permit, but they are assessed at plat date. And so one thing I would want to say and consider, and this is something that's interesting about an initial impact fee ordinance is, if you do a phasing structure and you said you wanted to go a third, I would say for consideration for council, consider how that would be applied to previously plotted properties. Because if the vesting or the assessment date is at the plat date and you have to assess or look at all the previously plotted properties before this ordinance as well, since it's a fee, understand what that means, that they, anybody who's plotted who could have a 10, 20-year development plan may pay a third of the max for all of their 20 years of development. So just something to consider, while it's collected there, there's an assessment and a vesting date.
How would you suggest addressing that? What language would you address that? Because I'm specifically thinking of like the Pecan Park 17 units, and then I'm specifically thinking Pearl River, the, I think that's 16 or 17 units as well. Pearl River Phase One is, James, correct me, seven, eight? Is it about 50/50 split on Pearl River? Greg? The number of units at the Pearl River, at the north side of Pearl River, the number of multifamily units. It's 18 buildings, 17 buildings? How many buildings are in total? And then Phase One is half of that number? Yeah. So give me an example of how you would address that for a plat that was just approved a few months ago, that they will not put a shovel in the ground till probably January of '25.
Yeah, so the, there's no phasing structure in the curtain ordinance. So that's where this gets kind of interesting to talk about on the dais of how we would do it. But I think it would just need to be really clear in the ordinance about how previously plotted properties are treated. Are they all assessed at the Phase One rate? Is there no exemption or provision that says that that assessment carries? That's something that you would want to write into the ordinance to be clear about how previously plotted properties are treated as a clause or a section, if you want to do phasing, so.
Helen?
Otherwise, they would all just automatically default to that first phase.
So, so are you saying you would, we would say something like previously plotted properties and prior to May of 2023, in year 24 and 25 would pay 33%, in year 26 would pay 66%, and in year 27 would pay 100%?
Because there's a quote locking in of a rate based on your plat date, usually you apply that to the entire plat.
Okay.
So that's what I'm saying, and I don't know if Alan has a thought on that, to be creative. I haven't had a way to address it. It's just more of a recognition that that might be an unintended consequence. We've talked about that before.
Got it.
And just, we're talking about changing it as you go. And I think there was a question about meaning to vote to change the rate. That does happen, but if you already have a plat, that doesn't change on your midstream. So that only applies to new plats.
So for council to sort of wrap your head around that, if you chose, let's say that all previously plotted were assessed at the 66% rate, let's say the two-thirds rate, that's about the equivalent of what the rate the Planning Commission recommended anyway. So just as an FYI.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that last?
If you chose the, like, let's say that you said, okay, all previously plotted property is going to be assessed at the two-thirds rate, that's about the rate Planning Commission recommended anyway.
Okay.
Just FYI.
And then, I don't think you answered the question as far as if we want to raise it at a later date. Wasn't there a time period that you had to wait before you could?
No, so it's, so the, basically, the only provision of the law is that you got to relook at what the maximums are and redo the study every five years at a max. Once that's done and locked in, which you already adopted in September, so five years from September, y'all can meet at any time to change them. It just wouldn't change on someone who's already plotted, but it would affect the new plats coming in. You have that one year grace period from this initial ordinance that you won't be able to do anything anyways for previously plotted properties, but you could change it at any time after that. So, not that you want to keep coming back and rehashing all this, but.
I thought I remembered in your last presentation that if you wanted to change the rate, that you had to wait a certain amount of time to do that, but there's, okay, good, thanks.
Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Madam City Manager. We have had at least one, maybe two development agreements very recently that have included an agreement to pay transportation impact fees, just simply because we were considering this possibility of doing this. And did they agree to pay at the maximum rate?
They agreed to pay at the maximum rate, and I would call that a hedge.
A hedge, a hedge against what?
A hedge against the decision that you were going to come up with.
Okay. And in a world where they are liable, if you will, for the maximum rate, that allows you and them to have a negotiation about, perhaps they build a road and maybe it costs them less because they did that, and then we give them credit for the maximum rate?
Correct.
And so that's, seems to me to be a positive thing overall.
Yes, it's, it's, it's a positive thing.
Yeah, and it's interesting that we got to test the market, and, and we saw how it turned out, and the developments are saying that they'll, they'll pay it at the maximum rate right now.
Yes, that multifamily, the multifamily complex.
You know, another way of phasing such that we don't get stuck at a low rate for the first, for, for people that are plotted, is to just do like a 65, 85, 100, and then that would put your first one at 65, and then?
Which is the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Right, Planning Commission rate approximately. And then, you know, so I guess it would be year two is 65% because year one is zero because of the grace period. year two is sixty-five percent, because year one is zero, because of the grace period. So I guess at the end of year one, you go to sixty-five, and then of year two, eighty-five, and of year three, a hundred, and, and that would phase it in over three years.
That's another way to do it, yes?
Yeah.
And just for clarification on two things, year one would be twenty-twenty-four, year two would be twenty-twenty-five, and year three would be twenty-twenty-six after the grace period? Is that the idea of the one, two, and three, that y'all are talking about?
Right, yeah, the, the first number obviously wouldn't apply during the grace period, that, you know, that it doesn't make sense. So, yeah, it would be the year after the grace period.
And then the sixty-five, eighty-five, and a hundred you're mentioning, is that as a percentage of the maximum in each area? So those numbers would vary?
Yeah, that's pretty straightforward.
Just to clarify, because the, the committee had gone for that flat, they had said that sixty-five percent of B, just to, which was the lower rate.
Right.
But...
Oh, true. Yes, yes, you're right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Just to be clear, yeah.
Sixty-five percent of the lower forty-nine.
Yeah, fifty-two-hundred per house, yeah.
Of the fifty-two oh four, yes, which would have been thirty-five eighty-four. So sixty-five percent of eighty-six forty-four is fifty-six eighteen versus the committee's recommendation of thirty-five eighty-four.
Yeah. So that, that was, as I found our market testing in this to be illuminating in terms of what the market will bear and, and what their response was.
Sure, and I will, I will say that the Reed Ranch property was a little bit different in that it was infrastructure-rich, in terms of water and wastewater. So there was very little expansion. Of course, they're also hedging their room on that seventy-one wastewater line, but it was infrastructure-rich in that regard. It was really just the road expansion. And so I could see why that property was worth, and they were willing to do that, because it was, you know, two out of three is really good, as you're talking about a developable piece of property.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, this goes back to what my initial concern was, the fact that this is going to impact people that have already been living here, paid taxes, grew up here, and, and don't feel that, the fact that we didn't keep up with the Joneses, they now have to pay for people that they don't even want coming into the city. So in turn, we did talk about low income, and I didn't, I might need you to explain that to me, because I didn't get what you were saying about that. But on the property tax end, when, when are they likely to see this increase in their property tax?
It's not an increase in their property tax, per se. It is a fee that's paid at the building permit. So, for example, you, you bought the, you, you go and you're getting a Lennar home. It's, it's a fee that's being passed on to you by Lennar in some way, shape, or form.
So, got it. So I thought I, I heard you say in taxes, but I was thinking to, I was thinking you were referring to everyone already living here with a plat, okay?
No, 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 ma'am, only...
Thank you for the clarification on that. And then, in low income, because, I mean, not everybody wants a house, first of all. Not everybody wants to live in a house, not everybody can afford a house. I don't care where, where we are in the market right now. Most people cannot afford to buy a, a home, and don't need a home, and would prefer to have an apartment. So if we're talking about affordable, you know, it's going to end up piggybacking on them and rent, and then electricity and bills, like, how are we helping the residents long-term? And I know, you know, you can't stop, you know, inflation, unfortunately, but you are going to have low-income people. I, I know people that are in Oak Grove, that hate living in Oak Grove, but that's all they can afford. But they would like to be in a nicer place, a nicer apartment, on what they can afford. So what, what were you saying about how we were going to help those individuals?
So the, the state law has a provision, if the housing itself qualifies as federally affordable housing, that's my capital I was saying, then it is by default, by state law, exempt from impact fees for transportation. However, that is a very low number to be considered federally affordable, and, and we rarely ever actually see that development occur in this area.
Right.
So we had talked about back in September, are there other cities that do have provisions to reduce or exempt these fees for certain housing types? The one example for that was City of Austin, who follows something with their smart housing program. Their ordinance incorporated a, effectively an exemption, they called it a reduction of a hundred percent, or an exemption, if the housing units were considered affordable for a median gross income of eighty, or eighty percent of the median gross income, I believe is what that number was. So they, they'd set it basically a affordability metric for an income threshold, instead of those units would qualify for that, whether that's a rental or a house, that they would exempt the transportation impact fees to try to incentivize that development to come in, to build those type of units that were more affordable. That was the intent of their policy.
So where, where does that discussion take place in this process?
In the policy creation, and also as a part of, very much like Reed Ranch, when the contribution from the developer was X times higher than what they said they could build the road for, and then it, the city decides whether it's going to participate, how it's going to accept. So it's very much a let the negotiations begin, but you do need to write something in the policy.
And what would that something be?
Well, there's already a stipulation for federally mandated, if you want to give that threshold, something else.
Because as he stated, and as we probably already know, what's the likelihood of something like that being built, right? We don't, it's not like we, we don't have anything like that now. I would like to see something a little bit more feasible, because that's, we're likely more to be able to negotiate with the developer when they come in, versus waiting on a federally, federally affordable housing.
So I'm hearing you say, if a developer comes in and they have an affordable housing complex, or a set-aside program where thirty percent of it is low-income, but seventy percent is market rate, you would like to see us work with that developer, perhaps incentivize the transportation impact fee to make it a feasible project?
Absolutely.
Okay. I look to you on how to write that.
Looking to Alan also.
We all look at Alan.
I think, I, I don't know that that has a place in this ordinance council, but I think that's something that we could negotiate through a separate agreement, whether it's some sort of reimbursement of property taxes or fees or, or something like that. That's how I would prefer to approach it.
Right, absolutely. I, that's why I was asking, where does that fit in this conversation? Because I figured it wouldn't be tonight, but how do we, as a council body, approach that going forward? Is that something we need to discuss as an agenda item, so that we know what we're going to be incentivizing, or is that just going to be kind of a case-by-case situation as the development comes in? Or do, as she said, we need to put some language in there?
I think we need a, I think we need a policy moving forward on how we handle that type of incentive, or how we want to handle those types of developments that want to come in. I mean, the other part of this conversation is addressing affordability, not just for low-income, but like our seniors and those kinds of things. So Austin has the SMART, what do they call it?
SMART, they call it, it's an acronym, SMART Housing, but their impact fee ordinance literally has a clause that specifies the percentage of median gross income that would be considered as a, basically a fee reduction of a hundred percent. It's in their ordinance written right now, so.
So that's, that's what I'm looking for.
I'm sorry, and that's probably something you would recommend that we work on as an amendment to this ordinance?
Right, well, and, yeah, I think what I was going to say too is, since the, there is a grace period, since this is the first time you're considering this, you have a year before anybody would be having to pay a building permit. So I think if there's additional things like this from a policy standpoint, you would have time to work that in before anybody ever came to have to pay that for one of those type of developments. So you do have some time, which is, and time for staff to get ready for collections and accounting and things like that. It's intentional.
That's what I was hoping here.
So Councilmember Lee, to answer your question, I think that's a separate agenda item for a future council meeting, where we have a broader policy discussion with our city manager about what incentives we may want to provide as a matter of standard policy, and the impact fee credit could be part of that.
Perfect. That's exactly what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Councilmember Meyer.
So Jake, just for clarification, and for anyone listening right now, this is for all new construction, right? TAs for new. So Mr. Jones, that lives on XYZ Street, if he doesn't build anything new right there, he is not going to be impacted, right?
Correct.
However, if we set the fee so low, and this is where I go back to Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland, starting at the sixty-five and what the PNC recommended, if we set it so low as to not have the funds for the infrastructure we need, the citizens could be impacted in some other form, correct?
The other way I like to say it is that things don't get built, so things get worse, in terms of traffic. The people will come, but the infrastructure doesn't get there. There's a, that yellow piece of the pie chart in my presentation, and that's another way we've kind of presented that in the past, is that it just doesn't get built.
Exactly. So in that case, that's why I think, starting with the sixty-five, which was recommended, and if we want to progressively for the three, as Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland said, we could do that, but I just have a problem going below the sixty-five.
Any other questions for Jake, any other comments? Well, council, we, we, we are at a, our public hearing is still open. Once we close the public hearing, we'll have thirty days to adopt an ordinance. Are y'all ready to make a motion, or are we asking staff to go back and create an ordinance, taking into consideration the myriad of comments, suggestions that have been offered up, and we keep the public hearing open until our meeting on January ninth?
I think we should take a motion. And motion that we adopt this plan with the maximum assessable fees set as they are in the ordinance, with the addition of a phase-in at sixty-five percent, eighty-five percent, and a hundred percent in each year after the twelve-month grace period. I'll stop there.
Okay, hold on to that, hold on to that motion, because I'm going to, I'm getting the indication that I need to close the public hearing, and, and then take up a motion. Then we'll have thirty days after that, y'all. Public hearing is closed. We have a motion presented by Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland. Do I have a second?
Second.
Can you repeat that motion first?
Yes. Motion to pass the ordinance with the maximum assessable fees set as they are, twenty-three forty-nine in A and fourteen fourteen in B, with a phased-in approach to get to that number of sixty-five percent in the first year after the grace period, then eighty-five percent, then a hundred percent.
As part of your, I'm sorry, as part of your motion, include a grace period beyond the twelve-month mandate?
The great, the twelve-month grace period.
Okay.
Yeah, which is what's written in the ordinance.
Thank you.
And then, just so I'm clear on the phasing that we spoke about earlier, city manager, you said thirty-three, sixty-six, and then a hundred percent, correct?
Correct. Before Jake brought me to reality about what that means.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm clear on the, on the phasing end. I'm, I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. Thank you.
Are you clear? Is everyone clear on, on, on the motion? Okay, I have a, I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland, I have a second by Councilmember Meyer. Is there any further discussion?
I, I think that we should consider if we have captured the exceptions that we want, because I didn't consider that in the motion, and so I'm considering if we should amend it in some way. There was, for instance, the, the ADUs, one ADU is already in here, I understand. There was a discussion about plats of less than four, or...
Plats less than four.
So there were some other kind of suggestions, I guess, from, from staff that are not currently incorporated into the motion, and I just wanted to give us the opportunity to maybe put a pin in the motion for just a second, look at those other things, and see if we want to include those.
Agreed, we want to make sure that we get this right.
Yeah.
So, council, at our last discussion, we did say plats less than four, because generally those can be exempted from the plating process and approved administratively. So that was one ticky mark. The other one was remodels. We went back and forth on the price of the remodel, the cost of the remodel, what that remodel was going to entail, and I think at the end we said, a remodel is a remodel, is a remodel, it's going to be exempt. And then the additional dwelling unit is already included here, plus the caveat that's already written about federal low income.
So we have the plats less than four, remodels exempt. Are remodels already exempt in the way it's written now, or is there a square footage thing that gets, or like a percentage that gets in the way, or?
I think it would depend on how the building permits are processed. So if you have a building permit for a square footage that somehow would create more traffic, I think there might be something else to be left up to staff interpretation in some way.
Okay, so then we should say that remodels are exempt.
And I, I specifically think about the gentleman who came in, if you guys recall, during our B-three conversation, they were going to frame in the garage for their disabled brother and or sister, and so it had a separate entrance, separate parking. That would be considered sort of an ADU under ours, but they already had an ADU at the rear. I don't think that's what y'all are intending. That's an attached structure to the house.
So then I think that what we're talking about of additions is plats less than four and, and remodels are exempt.
So you're, you're adding that to your motion?
So I would like to amend my own motion to add an exception for plats less than four, four units? Is that the right way to say that? So, thank you. So plats less than four units, and then all remodels should be exempt.
Can I clarify something?
Yes, please.
By remodel, are you specifically referring to residential remodels?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Residential remodels, and I appreciate how that could be different, especially as large, commercial, multi-story things are getting converted into residential right now. That would be a remodel, and not something you'd want to exempt. Yeah. So yes, residential remodels and plats less than four units added to the motion.
I agree to the amendment.
We have a motion with amendments that have been accepted by the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will, call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council, for the very robust discussion. We will move on to item twelve G. Consider action to approve resolution of R-2023-172 of the City Council. The City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the twenty-twenty-four council meeting schedule attached as Exhibit A, and providing an effective date. Madam City Secretary?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I have before you this evening the twenty-twenty-four city council meeting, regular meeting schedules proposed. The Homerood Charter states that the council shall meet regularly at least one time each month, and so I've listed out the meeting dates. It has the date, the time, the location, and the agenda deadline is the staff, agenda deadline to get the items in for the agenda management. I also want to point out that the October eighth meeting is highlighted with asterisks, that is the date that you all will be traveling to the TML conference, and I understand that some of you will probably have things going on during the day, so I would offer that you may want to consider maybe moving that date from a non-regular date to maybe an earlier date, or, because you'll be gone that week.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, that's a good consideration, considering the majority of us will be going to the TML conference, or y'all... conference, are y'all receptive to us changing to a non-traditional date for our City Council meeting?
Yeah. What about the day before, the seventh of October, the Monday?
On a Monday? We have a suggestion from Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland for a Monday, do we have another suggestion we'd like to consider?
I'm sorry, is that, so, is that the week of TML?
That's the week of.
Um, which would be Tuesday, right?
Yes, mhm.
Which is, I'm sorry, what's the date?
So October eighth is a Tuesday, um...
I mean, I, I don't have to be here for everyone to have a council meeting, but I'm, I'm engaged quite a bit now in TML, which will require me probably to go down early.
Okay.
Um, so, as long as there, there's a quorum.
We can move it though.
Yeah, there should be no problem moving to another week.
Yeah, can we do the Friday before, maybe, or the Thursday? Not the Friday, Friday would be bad.
No Friday.
That was, yeah, well, of course, Friday's a workday for me, anyway.
We can consider the first Tuesday, or we, or we can...
Yeah, we can just move a full Tuesday back or for, or forward or back.
Right.
Oh, and that fits, because we won't have a meeting in September twenty-fourth, we'll have it September seventeenth because of budget approval, so that would be a two-week skip, and then October first would be a meeting, that would kind of, kind of fit.
I want a Tuesday.
We're suggesting Octo, Tuesday, October first as a substitute for Tuesday, October eighth.
First Tuesday instead of the second.
Does that work for you?
That does, that'll be in ICMA National, the twenty-first and the twenty-second, so September, that'll work.
Okay.
It'll work out. If you could republish that schedule with, with, with that change, and I will entertain a motion, if y'all will suggest the change of the October, the first meeting in October date, I would appreciate it.
Motion that we accept this list of meeting dates, changing the October eighth meeting to October first.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Crouch, no further discussion, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you, Council. Moving on to item twelve H, consider action to approve resolution of R dash two-zero-two-three dash one-seven-five of the City Council, the City of Bastrop, Texas confirming appointment by the Mayor Barry Moody to place five of the diversity, equity, inclusion board as required in section three point zero eight of the city's charter and establishing an effective date. Madam Secretary, I'll go ahead and take this, Ms., Ms. Moody has accepted, or has provided us with her application, for those of y'all who don't know, Ms. Moody, she is, uh, she worked for the Chamber of Commerce years ago, she's currently a cast, a Castle Volunteer Advocate, she's on the Board of Directors of the Bastrop Pregnancy Resource Center, and currently serves as the President of the Committee, Austin Area on, Agency on Aging, the AAA. She's just been added to the Health and Human Services Commission Respite Committee, and she volunteers at the Family Crisis Center, she's also a certified mediator, and I respectfully request your confirmation of this appointment.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lee, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Meyer, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, I appreciate it, we will move to item twelve I, consider action to approve resolution number R dash two-zero-two-three dash one-seven-four, the City Council, the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming the appointment by the Mayor Sean Plesh to place eight of the Main Street Program Advisory Board as required in section three point zero eight of the city's charter and establishing an effective date. I queried our Main Street Committee, as well as our council liaison, Main Street Board, as well as our council liaison, Councilmember Meyer, on reappointing Ms. Plesh to this, to this board, and they were all in agreement, as many of us know, Ms. Plesh has been an active member of Main Street, the downtown business, and, as well as a long-time, long-time business owner in our historical district, and I respectfully request your confirmation of this appointment.
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Lee, no further discussion, Madam Sec, City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Once again, Council, thank you, I appreciate that, our volunteer groups are extraordinarily important. We, we will now retire to executive session for those items that we were unable to finish up in the previous time, it is...
Do you want to, just, just for safety, Mayor, do you want to call out those two items?
I will call, I will call out those items at the request of our city attorney. Item two E, City Council shall convene to close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding the proposal of a public improvement district in connection with the Bastrop Gateway Development. Item two G, City Council shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding potential amendment to the Colorado-BIN Development Agreement and Public Improvement Plan. And item two H, City Council shall convene and close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding potential agreement with Correx and SpaceX related to real property. It is nine oh four, we are in executive session. It is ten oh three, and Council has returned from executive session, we're now back into regular session. On item two C, there will be no action, on two D, there will be no action, on two E, no action, two F, no action tonight, two G, no action, and I'm looking for a motion on item two H.
Motion to approve on first reading a contract with Correx and bring back for second reading.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland, a second from Councilmember Plunkett, any discussion, seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will, call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, motion passes, we'll move to item number thirteen.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, I have a second, we stand adjourned.